Okay, welcome everybody to the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education Regular Meeting. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
May please call the roll.
Harlan?
Here.
Eliason? Evans?
Here.
Here.
Herzog?
Here.
Lindberger?
Here.
Alstead?
Here.
Okay, great. Let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. I guess I'll lead. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Board and Administrative Reports. The Board President's Report, the only thing I have is the Superintendent's Evaluation Report. Is I supposed to read this? Or is it just filed? Should I read it out loud?
You certainly may.
Okay. On June 28, 2016, the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education conducted an executive session to complete the Superintendent yearly evaluation. Six of the seven Board members were present for this session, and only one Board member has less than one year of service. The evaluation used by the Board covers seven aspects of a superintendent. The aspects are ranked by the Board members on a scale of weak, satisfactory, and strong. For the aspects of community relationship, educational leadership, strategic planning, business and finance, and personal qualities, Mr. Stan Mack is rated as strong. For the two aspects of relationship with the Board and staff and personnel, he is rated as satisfactory. The three goals set forth by the Superintendent and the Board for the 2015-16 school year include: implementation of the OASD strategic plan, completion of the 16-17 OASD budget adjustment process, prepare, plan, and inform the OASD community for a 2016 referendum election. The Board ranked the Superintendent's performance in achieving these three goals on a five-point scale of unacceptable, needs improvement, good, excellent, and outstanding. The consensus of the Board is Mr. Stan Mack performed in an outstanding manner. This Board is happy to report that Mr. Stan Mack has successfully reached the three goals required for an annual bonus, which he has done every year since he has served the Oshkosh Area School District. Mr. Stan Mack has the full support of the Board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent's Report.
Yes. And it is the shortest of the year. Superintendent's Good News Report. The ASBO membership, congratulations to Sushnoor for reaching 30 years as a member of the Association of School Business Officials International. I caught that in the recent publication, and Sue never even told us that special recognition had occurred. But if you read everything that crosses your desk, you catch things about special people, including Sue, and we're, congratulations Sue, on that achievement. Lastly, and lastly, simply the Superintendent's Calendar for the past, and when you're on vacation for two weeks, there's not much on that calendar. So, but that, that is a simple and short report for this evening, the shortest of the year.
I don't know what to say.
All right. We need some students to come back.
Right, we absolutely do.
Okay. Are there any other reports by committee chairs?
I have one. Facility and Finance Committee Minutes. This will be short too, because two of the big things on here are actually on our agenda tonight, so I don't want to steal all their, where's Linda? Oh, she'll come back. So they're on tonight. The first was the Budget Variance Report, which was a written report, no questions were asked, it was all good. The next part was Mr. Jedarski, the, from West High School came and talked to us about the batting cages at Oshkosh West, that they need some upgrading. He requested to upgrade them, and the batting cages are considered a community facility. A lot of the youth baseball and softball use them, other than just the West. They're located over by Eagle Park, right, is that Eagle, Red Arrow?
Red Arrow.
Red Arrow Park on Eagle Street. So that, a lot of community uses those for the baseball communities. The Oshkosh Youth Baseball has funds from a land sale that they would like to apply towards the batting cages. They're the one pushing this a lot, is the OIB. The cost of the baseball batting cages would be approximately $50,000 in total. FIS One, which would be donated by the Oshkosh Youth Baseball, consists of all the cage work, that costs 37, excluding the accessories. The cost for the softball batting cages is approximately $36,000, and it is being determined how these pieces would be funded. There is some money through Fund 80, however, Sue was explaining to us that the budget's not formally approved until October. The entire area will be surfaced with turf that was purchased from UWO. UWO had extra turf and used turf from some of their upgrades, so we bought that very inexpensive from them, Brad, through Brad's funds himself. It was noted that three quotes were received, but because of the lack of the vendors, there was not a formal bid done on it. And so, if there are legitimate reasons for not bidding, a waiver should be requested. We did, we are getting those three bids in though, from the three different vendors. Somebody from the Oshkosh Youth Baseball, that's very involved in that club, has been doing all the calls and making all of it, trying to find the, a good person to do it. It was also suggested through the Finance Committee that we have, going forward, we want to have some discussion, probably in policy and governance meetings, to determine the bidding policy that should be reviewed and redone, because we're looking at it, and not everything is cohesive with that policy, so we need to look at that policy, make sure that we're even following it, or changing it to what the times are now of what we're doing with those bids and the RPs and things. So, he was going to bring that to the Board in August, looking at those batting cages for us, and he was going to get more work on it. The next was the Nursing Staff Request, which, I just want to call by his first name, because I pronounce his last name wrong every time.
Matt.
Kramer River.
Kramer River.
Kramer River, is going to be asking, and I know he has some of his nursing staff with him tonight, they're going to be looking at, currently, we're low on nurses in our district for how many sites we have, and he's coming in with the request for what they need, and he's got lots of numbers, and it's pretty significant, so I will definitely let Matt take the lead on that tonight. And then next one was the Alternative EBD Programming. We approved CISA VI contract in June, and Linda, Mrs. Puron, has looked at some other options for us, and she wants to take a lead on doing it within our own district. So she's got all the numbers and all that good information, and it sounds really interesting, so we'll, I'll let her take the lead on too, because I'll just be repeating what they say. And the meeting was adjourned at 10:00, and the next meeting is scheduled for September 15th at 8:30. We're skipping August, because there wasn't enough on the agenda.
Great. Thank you. Are there any other committee reports?
Thank you. The Policy and Governance Committee met on Tuesday, June 28. We started with our two Activities Directors, Brad Jedarski and Craig Leader, who presented updates and changes suggested to the 2016-17 High School Co-Curricular Handbook. Mr. Jedarski walked the committee through the changes, which, some of which are due to WIAA updates, and others included updating policy numbers, because the district had transferred to the Neola policies. And others were either clerical changes or updates made to rules, to improve conditions for students and/or administrators enforcing rules, to make them more clear. Because of the handbook is part of rules, it does not require Board approval. However, past practice has been that the Policy and Governance Committee approved the changes, and then the book would go to print. So, the Activities Directors were asked by the committee to provide a written report for the Board about the changes for this meeting, which I believe was in our Board Packet. We also reviewed updates to the Middle School Co-Curricular Handbook. The Deans of the middle schools had reviewed the co-curricular code, and again, Mr. Jedarski went through the changes with the committee, who made a request that the pages be numbered for ease in finding things, and correction of a few clerical errors, and then the committee gave its approval to move forward with the printing of the book. The majority of our meeting was spent with Dr. Louis Birchbauer, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, who addressed us about updating the Superintendent evaluation forms, as well as the job descriptions. I believe the job description is about 20 years old. We'd like to bring that into the 21st century, and Dr. Birchbauer provided us with some assistance on how we might go about that. He suggested that we replace the current 59 items in the job description with 21, using seven categories of the Wisconsin Association of School Board Educator Standards for Administrators, and then developing three statements underneath each of those. The idea would be that we would continue to work with the Superintendent on a quarterly basis, but not on all seven standards at once, but rather picking one or two at a time, and then, over the course of the four quarters of the year, we would have addressed all of them. It was also suggested that we continue to use goals as performance enhancement to salary, and we set some action steps, which were to review Neola policies 2030 and 40 by the administration, having a special meeting of the Board for the week of August 15th to discuss the goals, and to begin with a draft of the evaluation form, which the Minutes say will be created by the Board President and Vice President, so we have some work to do. The goals for 2016-17 would then go to the Board for approval at the August 26th meeting, and at that time, the list of competencies should also be scheduled for each of the quarters for 2016 to 17. And then, special quarterly meetings of the Board would be scheduled in August, November, February, and May. And our next meeting is August 16th at 10:00 a.m. Thank you.
As a reminder to the Board, at your table tonight, Sheri has prepared a preference list of potential meeting times to follow up on that issue.
Very good.
And so, keep us moving on schedule.
Good.
Okay, are there any other reports? All righty, move on. Is there anybody here that would like to address the Board on non-agenda-related issues?
Stan just asked me to, well, Sushnoor, Executive Director of Business Services. In last week's Northwestern, there was an article from this, that we are getting like $2.5 million more in state aid, and Stan wanted me to explain that that's not additional money for the district to spend. We're controlled by the revenue limit formula, and the revenue formula is giving us a zero increase. So we're actually had, if it wasn't for our successful referendum, we would get a zero increase in dollars. So the fact that we're getting $2.5 million more in state aid just lowers the tax levy. So our tax levy will actually go down by $2.5 million, which will offset that $4 million increase because of the referendum. So, I just wanted to make that clear, because it really was a little bit misleading in the Northwestern article, that we'd be getting this windfall of money, so.
And we expect, and I have not heard any comments, for those who have read it, but I did want to have a full understanding that we had a discussion, and in fact, individuals representing opposition to the referendum spoke constantly about new money in the summer. This is not new money in the summer, it simply is property tax relief. So the real impact of the referendum is, will be about 50% of what the levy actually was authorized to be, because it redistributes the property, the property tax portion, once again, and we intend to emphasize and clarify that issue, that we don't have people misunderstanding. And as you know through the referendum, there are lots of times myths that generate out of, out of those discussions, and for us this evening, it was very important that we get that first discussion out, that there is no new money. It is simply a real positive benefit to taxpayers in the community, that the referendum will only cost about half as much as we marketed it as for the year, so. Is that something that should be submitted to the paper, like in an article or a column or something, to explain that? Yeah, we will, we will do a follow-up press release on the issue. I'm planning to have that as an additional item on my monthly radio interview on this Friday morning, and to make sure that we get that out. But Jim, I think that's an excellent idea to put it in a formal press release to clarify that, the impact. Where also tentative on the issue is the fact that even in that article, there were provisos that said, if this occurs, and this occurs, and this occurs, this is the likely result, and that we won't have until late October, the final total amount of state aid that will be payable, because it's all driven by what every district in the state is doing, because it's a fixed amount of dollars that have been allocated by the legislature for funding schools.
That's an important thing to keep in mind, too, is DPI is required to give school districts an estimate of their state aid on July 1st, but that's based on our budget report, that's not based on actual data, and it's not based on how that might be redistributed over the state, based on how other districts spend or don't spend their budgets. So it's really very, very preliminary.
But we didn't, we wanted to make sure that we counteracted any myth.
Yes.
So, thank you, Sue.
Thanks. Okay, is there anybody here from the public that would like to address the Board on an agenda-related issue? Okay, seeing none, we'll move into the Consent Resolution Agenda. The Board has been furnished with the background material on each item, or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a Board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda, and will be voted on separately. I have 5A and 6 have been requested, are there any others? Okeydoke. Number one, well, the Board will consider approval of number one. Minutes of June 22nd, 2016, regular Board meeting. Two minutes of June 28th, 2016, Special Board meeting. Three minutes of June 28th, 2016, executive session of Special Board meeting. Four, bills payable. Five, B Personnel Administrator Appointments. And seven, independent hearing officers for expulsions for 2016-2017 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Herzog?
Here, yes. Aye.
Lindberger?
Aye.
Alstead?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Eliason? Evans?
Aye.
Garner?
Aye.
Motion to hear it.
Thanks. Okay. 5A, hold on, I have to read the, all right, be resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the appointments, temporary appointments, resignations, retirements, and salary schedule as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I had asked that this one be pulled. Once again, it's always bittersweet to me to see the names of retirees on this list as they're entering a new stage of life, but I think it's important that we take a moment just to thank these retirees for the contributions they've made to the students' progress and learning during the course of their tenure. Mary McCutcheon is retiring as an occupational therapist. Sandy Abraham is a school secretary at Emmeline Cook. Pat Drager, a school secretary from Oshkosh West. Susan Jeffers, a building assistant and cross-categorical teacher assistant. Jeffrey Reiner, a building custodian III. Carol Schwartz, an ID teacher assistant. And Deborah Stang, a supervisor teacher assistant. I will be supporting this resolution, and again, thanking these upcoming retirees for their contributions to the learning and growth of our students.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Lindberger?
Aye.
Alstead?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Eliason? Evans?
Aye.
Garner?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Motion to hear it.
Okay, Resolution Number Six. Be resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education pursuant to Section 120.213B of the state statutes, approve the list and description of the student academic standards that shall be in effect for the 2016-17 school year as said. List has been presented in Exhibits A, B, and C, with the date of July 20, 2016, in the Board's Packet with said academic standards, representing the Board adopted standards that are required under Section 118.301GA of the state statutes, as well as the Board-approved standards in the additional specific academic content areas, and provide notice to parents and guardians in a manner that is consistent with the requirements of Section 120.1213 of the state statute of the Board-approved list and description of the student academic standards that shall be in effect for the 2016-17 school year as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I had also asked that this one be pulled. Mrs. Mosher always does a great job with her staff reports, and since this was the most lengthy staff report, in terms of the supporting evidence, and since curriculum defines what we do every day with students to help them learn and grow throughout the year, I thought it appropriate to be able to thank Mrs. Mosher for her efforts, and also ask her to give a two-to-three minute Reader's Digest condensed version of what this resolution really means.
What this resolution is saying to our public and to our community, that these are the academic standards that children are going to be held accountable to within our school district. Within there, every single course or content area is listed. Content area or academic standards can be found by every single parent when they log into Infinite Campus under the parent portal, because we work with children, giving them feedback to those academic standards, we work with parents, giving them feedback on how their children are doing to those academic standards, and we really are doing our assessments to those academic standards. So every single one that is listed there is in our student information system, as well as in our learning management system, and with all of these, we are in compliance with state and federal regulations.
Thank you.
And this is the second year the Board has asked to approve this list. It was an action of the 2015 legislative session that mandated this, and it came awfully late in the session, in the spring of 2015. This year, we had much more time to prepare, as did every other district in the state, but this is the second year of taking action relating to this and asking the Board to do so.
If I could also note, there are no major revisions to our 16-17 academic standards, but please do anticipate, coming to you in the fall, we are going to ask the Board to consider adoption of the next-generation science standards, which then would mean, within our K-12 framework, our academic standards for science will, will change.
Okay. Any other discussion? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Julie.
Okay, please call the roll.
Alstead?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Eliason? Evans?
Aye.
Garner?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Lindberger?
Aye.
Motion to hear it.
Great. All right, we're on to workshops. Number one, 10-year facilities plan update. Jim Fox.
Before we do so, if we could just introduce and welcome two of our administrative appointments, and I'll ask Andy Jones to introduce our new Assistant Principal at North, and he's brought his family, and I'll ask Sushnoor to introduce our new Director of Food Service.
And very briefly, we're very proud and excited to have our newest member of our administrative team. This is Hans Nelson. Hans, just give us about a one-minute introduction to the Board of Education, and I, and you can also introduce your family, please.
I'd be delighted to. Hi, I'm Hans Nelson, I'll be at Oshkosh North, and I'm very, very excited about this opportunity, and I, and I thank you for it. Along with me today, I'd like to introduce my, my wife, Mary, and my daughter, Laurel, and my son, Maximus. So, we're very excited to be here, and thank you for, for this opportunity. I have 21 years of teaching experience, and now I've taken the administrative lead, so I'm really excited about, about bringing all those types of things to the district here, so thank you very much.
You're welcome, Hans.
Yeah, thank you. [applause]
Just want to briefly introduce Michelle Stammen. She is our new Director of Food Service, so, I didn't tell her she had to say anything, so I didn't mean to put her on the spot.
That's okay, that's okay. I'm very excited to be here, and very happy for the opportunity. I have been in food service for 25 years. I've been a Director of Food Service for school districts in the Fox Valley area for over 17 years. I'm from Oshkosh, I live here currently, and I'm very excited to, this opportunity to be able to provide the children of this community nutritious meals, and improve the program any way I can, and been very welcomed. I've already started working with some of the folks here, and it felt very welcomed, and very happy to be here. Look forward to working with everyone.
Great. And we're excited to have you. [applause] Okay, I think we're ready, Jim.
Jim makes his way to the table. This is the second update in May of 2015. Jim presented for the first time to the Board a, his first 10-year plan, of which he's been working through that, and many of our summer projects and last summer projects have all been a party to that. But as with any plan that is related to facilities, it is a constantly changing and adjusting with new priorities and accomplished tasks, and, and new issues that sometimes surface even, that along the way. But Jim has worked hard at making this a live, active document to guide us along the way as we make capital investments.
Thank you, Stan, thank you, Board. The discussion tonight really centers around strictly re-familiarizing ourselves with the 10-year plan. We're not going to go through the plan, probably to many people's disappointment, but, really, I wanted to focus on, on three slides that were in your packet. The first slide, titled simply is a Budget Rubric, and it really just explains how, how the budget looks. The budget is not written, it's not presented as a report, because it's not designed or intended to operate as such. It is a spreadsheet, it's a dynamic document, as Dan had said. It can change daily, weekly, monthly, as, as it should. As problems emerge, as problems are solved, that, that document is updated, and so it will remain as such. But the rubric will help you understand how we prioritize needs at each particular site. You will see the, the information indicated on this head, on this title page, Priority Breakdown, CIP 1, 2, 3, and 4, on the bottom of that page. You'll see that information carried throughout the document. It helps guide myself, I believe it helps to explain expenditures and projected expenditures at schools, why, why we're thinking the way we're thinking, why we may prioritize one expenditure versus another. So that's an important note. The second spreadsheet I wanted to identify, I think just because of the, the large numbers, and, and it may be a little bit misleading, is, is titled Hardscape Roofing Budget. Now, the reason I bring this to your attention is, the 10-year plan is just that, it covers a 10-year period. However, the audit that was performed to create the information that you're seeing on this part of the overall 10-year plan, is actually five years' worth of budgetary information. So this audit was conducted in 2014. The, the numbers presented to me and the work required from the individual performing the audit recommended that we perform these repairs by 2019. In 2019, I will conduct another audit of our hardscape and roofing plan, but it was unrealistic to try to project those numbers over five years, because we couldn't possibly assign enough revenue through our capital improvement fund to be able to cover those expenses. So we spread them out over 10 years, however, as I did point out, in 2019, we will conduct another audit. In 2019, we expect another five years' worth of expenditures, which will overlay what you see now, and by that, you can kind of see the, the diminishing impact of deferred maintenance. So I wanted the opportunity to be able to point that out to you as well. What we've done, since we could not accomplish everything set forth by that plan in five years, is we tried to really identify what is the worst, what is the most immediate need, we tried to address that first, and we tried to push the items that were targeted for year five back to year 10. We'll reevaluate this when we redo our audit in 2019. The last item I wanted to point out is the last spreadsheet, and this is simply an overall spreadsheet. It's a, it's a rolling up, if you will, of the, all the pages that fall within the 10-year plan for every school, including maintenance equipment, and, and all the individual needs under each department. It's important to note that this spreadsheet, what I wanted to point out in this session is the far-right column, Deferred Maintenance. As you will see right now, we have currently $48 million of known, and I emphasize known, deferred maintenance within the OASD, or within the Oshkosh School District. Every year, we're discovering something new. Every year, we are, as we get into walls, we discover new problems, we solve some problems. So the, the number does go up and down, but it has been trending that that number is growing. Case in point, the Hardscape Plan that we just reviewed. So it's important to understand our current position. So it's important to understand our current position. I do want to emphasize, though, we are finishing this year as Phase Eight of the McKinstry Plan, which was part of the $14.5 million that was approved by the Board of Education last year for the Act 32 Energy Exemption Plan. Positive impact on the district, positive impact on deferred maintenance, and a significant step in the right direction. I don't want that to get lost in the numbers. I think those are fantastic things and accomplishments that you should be very proud of achieving. We are poised to finish that schedule on time, on target, on budget, and ready for the school year in September. However, that $48 million is looming out there, and we are finding things month by month as we work with contractors, as we get deeper into buildings, and our buildings are aging. So these problems won't go away, they will continue to get worse. That said, I also want to make sure I add that this capital improvement plan, if you take the time to review it, should you have the time to review it in detail, you will notice that it does not address any remodel needs within our facilities, it does not address any renovation or any building replacement costs or any security needs. The CIPI budget and that $40 million is strictly maintenance needs, infrastructure needs that are known to have failed or are failing at this point. So I want to make sure that that's understood. It does not address what I think are comprehensive security needs, or I've had many requests from teachers with regard to STEM educational areas. It does not address the needs for trying to renovate those spaces to achieve current educational delivery methods. So I guess in conclusion, I want to reiterate that we've made very positive investments. I'm very proud of this district. I'm very proud of the position that Stan Mack and the Board of Education have taken with regard to facilities and the commitment you guys have made. I really do appreciate that. It says a lot that we're able to reinvest that money within our facilities. In order to best develop a strategic facilities plan, which is really a direction I want to take our facilities department and to continue to lower our deferred maintenance problem, I have two goals in mind that I'd like to achieve this year first. I'd like to pursue another Energy Exemption Act 32. As I had said, we are in the completion right now of McKinstry Phase Eight Energy Exemption Plan that will conclude in September. I would like to bring, at least it is my goal, to bring another plan to this board. However, the timeline for that plan has been limited to a degree. The state of Wisconsin has cut that plan where last year we had until November 1st. This year, we have until October 1st to pass that plan. So there is a time constraint. It is my hope that through discussion, we're able to present something to this board in time that we can pass that plan for the fiscal year 16, 17. The second item that I am hoping to achieve is that I would like to contract with a consultant during the 16, 17 fiscal year to conduct a comprehensive facilities audit. I know that facilities audits have been done within this district in the past. This particular audit is strictly to address the physical buildings. I want to understand from top to bottom, what truly are we dealing with structurally, building envelope? We do have some aging buildings, there are some significant things that we do not see, I know that. And I think we need to get a neutral, professional set of eyes on that so we can have an overall study that I believe will start a positive dialogue between administration and the Board of Education as to what problems are truly, what are we really looking at? What is a replacement plan? Perhaps what is the best use of our dollars? Where ought we be spending our money based on the direction the district wants to go? That said, that concludes the three slides that I wanted to cover tonight. Are there any questions with regard to the 10-year plan or the goals that I've set forth for myself?
I should just add that four and a half years ago, five years ago, and actually before the replacement construction of a new school of Oakmont, this district had over $75 million worth of deferred maintenance, and we, at $48 million and percolating, is still significant, but there have been major investments in our facilities to, both from standpoint of efficiency and currency and attractiveness and creating effectively pretty close to two rebuilt schools, one brand-new built and one remodeled and added to, but also all the other energy retrofits that are significant. So the number that I was hearing in the spring of 2012 was over $75 million worth of deferred maintenance, and we have made progress.
Absolutely. Okay? Yes?
I don't have a question, Jim, but this is an opportunity for me to thank you for what is a relatively small project in the whole scheme of things in terms of this 10-year facilities plan, and that is the hooks and the shelf in the all purpose. And the rest room over here to make it more convenient for visitors and guests, including board members, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
John?
Yeah, I mean, I just want to follow up a little bit on what Stan said. I think nobody appreciates what you've accomplished more than me, because when I first got, I was the first one on this board when the number came up, that 70-plus million deferred maintenance, and looking at this plan now is truly heartening for me. I don't know how many of us will still be in this room. I see it goes out to 2026. How many of us will still be here in 2026? But I think this is a fantastic gift to leave for whoever is going to be here then. You've done a great job in laying out this plan and trying to dig us out of this hole, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well done.
And I've been reminded constantly by people in Jim's job that in virtually every school, including our school district, when you spend as much time talking about roof and roof replacement and envelopes, we have more acres of roofs than we do of parking lots. And that is, it's a constant issue of maintaining roofs, which parking lots can leak, but roofs cannot.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you very much.
Okay, on to our second workshop, Strategic Plan Metric Update. Moser Gunlock and Jankowski.
We wanted to present to you some information about the strategic plan and some of the metrics changes that we're making between our previous strategic plan and this one. We're going to talk a little bit about the overview of the community process that we used, a little bit about the purpose and objectives for establishing a different set of metrics. I'll provide a little bit of a high-level overview of the strategic plan, not just for you as board members, but also for anybody who may be watching on television to kind of take a look at what are all the main components of work. One thing you'll hear from us quite a bit is strategic plans are about resource allocation, how much time you spend, and on what do you spend it on. So these are very important documents for us. We'll talk a little bit about an overview of the questions, the measures that we're looking at using, what are the status. We'll ask the board for some input on this as well, and then we'll talk, Walter will talk a little bit about the board's role and the measures, and we'll go through some next steps, timelines, and then obviously open it up for some questions. One of the things we wanted to start off with and remind people of is this strategic plan really came through our community, and that's a little different in Oshkosh than it is in some school districts. A lot of times, either the board or the administration comes up with their strategic plan and then takes it out to the community and tries to say, okay, this is why this is such a good thing for us to work on. We kind of reverse that process here, and I think that's a smart way to do it, where we end up through the hard work of Oshkosh for Education. They spend a lot of time soliciting input from the community every three to four years to find out exactly what do they want from their school system. And that is distilled down to a series of priorities, and then the administration and board work together to come up with a solid set of action steps and goals to address each of those priorities. And then one of the new things from our previous strategic plan, where we focused a lot on completion of a lot of tasks, and we did a really good job of that, we're doing the same thing here, but we're also adding in a series of external metrics that we'll be able to use to see if we're actually moving the needle in certain areas. So just sort of starting fresh from that perspective.
So as any good lesson or workshop starts out, we have goals, and so we have two goals for our workshop this evening. We want to make sure that we have, you gain an understanding of the metrics behind and the scorecard behind the strategic plan, and we're also going to give you a preview of how we are looking at data, the six levels of data measurements, and then we are also going to introduce you to a scorecard that we are considering using.
So the first thing we wanted to do is just do the overview of the strategic plan, and for those who may not be aware, the community distilled down to five different key priorities. The first one was improve student learning for all. Second one was improve district communications. Priority three was develop and invest in our quality staff. Priority four was maintaining and improving facilities. Priority five was strengthening partnerships and community engagement. And what was interesting is even when you look at some of the things the board's been presented with tonight, all of those are found within this document, including the 10-year facility plan and the great work that Jim's been doing. And there was also a foundational goal of securing sustainable funding. Obviously, the April referendum went a long ways along that for at least the next several years, but that was considered to be a foundational goal, so we also have that in there as well. The plan duration, it's a three-year plan. It starts in the 16, 17 school year, and it will end at the 18, 19 school year. The administration will prioritize work based upon the strategic plan goals. There will be revisions and alterations. You just, you know, you can't avoid it. What we do as an administrative team is weekly at the executive team, we usually grab a given priority and then go deep into that and update all the information regarding that priority, and then we move on to the next priority the following week, et cetera, et cetera. So the plan's always in motion, always being worked on. The Level One completion percentage estimates will be very similar to what we've done in the past, and we most likely will be using some color codes as well. That's something that we've talked about before. We had it in our old plan, we just never really used it. This time, we're actually looking at doing that. And typically, those color codes represent, is something on track or ahead of schedule? Is it green? Is something, you know, slightly at risk of not being completed might be a yellow, and then red would be something you either don't have resources for or is definitely behind the eight ball or behind schedule. So we will have that information available as well. As I said, the first priority was improve student learning for all, and there are five different goals attached to that. The first one is ensure teachers and curriculum can support a personalized learning environment. The second one is ensure fairness and equity of instructional resources across the district. We've made great strides in that area, but we want to make sure we continue to maintain that. The third one is strengthening academic and behavioral supports for students. Goal 1D is create programs of choice at all levels, and Goal 1E is develop multiple methods to evaluate student data. So that is wrapped around the first priority of improving student learning. The second priority is improving district communications. There are four goals associated with that. The first one is allocating dedicated resources for district communications and marketing, something we haven't done in the past. The second one is understanding the needs, preferences, and perceptions of key stakeholders around what types of communications do they want. The third is develop an OASD brand communication and marketing plan, and the fourth one is improve district communication delivery channels. The third priority is develop and investing in our quality staff. There are three key goals there. The first one is ensure and support quality work performance. The second one is support work-life balance through wellness, and the third one is examine the effectiveness of the staff evaluation process. The fourth priority is maintaining and improving facilities. There are four goals associated with that. First one is annually update the 10-year facilities plan and communicating it with stakeholders. You saw some of that this evening. The second one is establish and implement consistent standards for safety and security. Part of that is being funded by the referendum, where we're going to be putting in security cameras over the 16, 17 school year. The third one is conduct a facility capacity study and audit. Jim brought that one up a few minutes ago as well. And the fourth one is continue to seek a means to become more energy efficient, and we have several positive options there. The fifth priority is strengthening our partnerships and community engagement. There are three main goals there. The first one is enhance community partnerships to prepare our students to be college, career, and community-ready. The second one is expand and strengthen school-community partnerships, and the third one is strengthen the district partnership with Oshkosh for Education. That one was pulled out separately because they have such a pivotal role in some of the improvements that have been made in the district, not only in gathering the information for you as a board to say, here's what your community's really looking for, but also meeting on an ongoing basis to hold us accountable to these goals, which is very important. Lastly, the foundational goal, securing sustainable funding. There's four key goals to that. Educating the public on state and resulting district fiscal situation. The discussion we had tonight about the fact that the increase in state aid does not mean one penny additional for the school system. Those are important things for our community to understand so they know what you know. The second one is develop a referendum plan to sustain programs and facilities. We've obviously completed that. The third one was strengthen the Oshkosh Area School District Education Foundation. We have some great ideas on how to do that. And the last one was seek alternative and non-traditional means of enhancing revenue, and we're working on that as well. But one thing I wanted to point out to you is while there's only five priorities, there's 23 goals in this plan, and there's 91 action steps, and each action step has tasks, and some of those tasks have subtasks. So there's a great deal of work behind all of these, and while we can distill it down to five priorities, it is the lion's share of what gets done here on a day-to-day basis. These are the big boulders that we're moving up the hill, and as we sometimes say, this is in addition to our day jobs, and I'm referring to our day jobs as staff day jobs. A lot of these are in alignment with those, but it's also, you know, we still have teachers every day doing great things with students even while we're making some of these larger-scale changes. So we're very careful not to jeopardize the progress that we've made and the progress that happens every day with teachers in classrooms at the expense of some of the other things in the plan. What I did want to do is, there we go. I think I'm too far away for this one. I want to show you a little bit about the strategic plan and show you that there is quite a bit underneath each one of these. So here's the current strategic plan that we have right now, and you can see there's all the goals I just talked about. If I expand everything here, and this is available on our website, so you can follow this as you go, you can see here is the entire plan and what we've been working on over the past couple of months. So if you take a look at a goal that I've been pretty familiar with, improving the district communication delivery channels, you can see we already have updating the district website, that's all in process. We have updating social media communications, that also is in process with a series of multiple tasks and subtasks, as well as video communication improvements. So there's a great deal of detail behind each one of these for people who are interested in that.
As you can tell with the strategic plan, we like to collapse it and then un-collapse it and recaps it, because just like we do with students with very large tasks, we tend to chunk, because if you look at this all at once, you know, sometimes, not sometimes, all the time, it looks very overwhelming, and so taking it at chunks at a time is a strategy that we use, and we absolutely do during exec team, take a priority area and review where we all are in these, because we can't, we have to be working in tandem, we have to be working together, we have to be pulling in the same direction, so making sure that we're doing that. So chunks at a time. Oh, and this leads into the overview of process and measures. So what we're going to talk about is, I'm going to start off, and then I'm going to turn it over to Walter, but we're going to talk about how we have taken the five priority areas and how we have started to think about data and think about it differently. In our previous strategic plan, we were trying to match up like if-then statements. So if we complete this goal, then this is the metric or this is the data measure that's going to be moved. And what we've learned, and as we have started been working with other organizations and looking at their strategic plans, is that we were a little bit too granular, trying to take a specific goal and saying it's going to move this specific data point, because I think we all know an education system, a district, is very complex, and so it takes many factors to actually like move a data needle or to see progress. So as we looked at that, Kim and I had worked with Walter several times, talking about data measures and worked with the exec team. And so as we were working through this... And so, as we were working, as we were working through this, we started to come up with a model for how we are going to look at data that would take from the classroom up into the strategic plan and then the strategic plan down into the classroom. And so, when we look at this, we came up with six levels of of measurements or metrics. So, the first level is the highest level. It's the highest overview level. And as Dave discussed in the strategic plan, we had completion on tasks or overall progress where we would have like red, yellow, or green. And so, this highest level is, are we on target? Are we off target? Are we making are we making progress or not making progress? We can say yes or no about priority areas or things that we need to do. So, very, very high level. Then going on into level two, we know that there needed to be data to support what's going on with the completion, not only that it's completed, but that there is qualitative or there's there's meat or metrics behind it. And so, that would be level two, high-level district measured results. Not not everything, because if you could see the data that we actually collect annually, monthly, daily, when school is in session, that also is overwhelming. So, what are the key data measures that's going to be an indicator of that we're really making progress? And I saw some of you were like starting to look at this. This is a little foreshadowing, we're going to look at that in a in a few minutes. So, very high-level district results. Then going into level three, this is where the detailed district measures, results by cohort, so looking at groups of children as they move over time, how are they doing? Or cohorts of results when we may be talking about facilities or what other priority area within the plan. But we're not always, as a board, going to be living in that detailed piece. Maybe if we have questions or we're going, you know, well, why why aren't we moving the needle on this one? Why hasn't there been any progress? Then we start to dig deeper into that. Also, living in level three is like our accountability data. So, as we come into the fall, the board is going to be presented with the the district report card and all the schools' report cards. So, those would be living and also in the level three. Now, those are all part of measuring into the strategic plan. Now, we're going to go a little bit further, and this is where we start to look at schoolwide data, where we're looking, how is a school doing as a group? How is that building as a community, that school level? And then, as we go into level four, level four goes into level five, this is where we have classroom, grade level, or course data. So, we're looking a little bit deeper because we know how students are doing at a particular classroom or a particular grade would feed into the school. And think about that, the school data would feed into the district data. And then, where is all of this coming from? Level six is our individual student data because it starts with our in our individual students, our children, each and every day, and how they are improving and how they are going as a learner. And remember, that's our priority area. Number one is making sure that we're improving student learning for all students. So, as we were starting to look at this and we were saying, what's this model going to look like? How could we graphically organize it? I wish we could have flipped the arrows the other way or we could have done it the other way because I really feel like it starts with the student and that pushes up all the way into our strategic plan. So, we can think of it as, you know, as administrators or as leadership, as the board, we're looking down, you know, from the top and then down to the individual student. But I think our work starts with the individual student and pushes up. So, imagine the arrows also going the other way. So, if we put this all together, these are the six levels of strategic plan metrics that we are going to be feeding, and one feeds into the other. So, a lot of the work that we've been doing lately has been talking about, what are those bridges or transitions between each of those levels? How are we going to communicate visually each of those levels and how does that work? Last week, we were working down in levels four, five, and six, and we had a group together talking about, how can we streamline and take that schoolwide data and make sure that it matches and informs and flows into level three in a meaningful way that can be represented graphically that users can easily grab onto? Because we have all of it, but the key is is can you are we organized and we can we grab it quickly? I think about like if you're in your kitchen and you have this massive pantry and you have all these things in the pantry, but if you don't know where exactly the things are that you're looking for, it makes for a pretty chaotic, you know, a pretty chaotic time, you know, making the recipe or cooking dinner. But once you get organized and you know exactly where things are, it just makes creating that wonderful meal or that dinner that much easier. And so, our hope is that we can categorize and put all the data buckets in in play there so that we can immediately grab it and use it as needed, if that makes sense.
And the heavy lifting in this, and you've seen me do data presentations before, and for those of you who've been on the board a long time, we started by just defining what were all the buckets of information that we had out there. We have those pretty well-defined now. And now, we also have them connected. The real trick right now is make sure that whatever data we're bringing in goes into the appropriate bucket that has appropriate security rights, that has appropriate limitations on who can see what, when, and how. And then, that information also is able to, we're able to pull reports out. So, what we do is the heavy lifting is what Julie's been working on with different groups saying, okay, what data are we tracking? Where's it going to go? And what reports do you as the practitioner really want to see? And then, once that's done, the actual visual representation, the dials and bar graphs and all that stuff, that's the easy part. You know, we can make it look pretty after that's all done, as long as it's all in the right places and we know where it is, we know what's how it's related, and we know how people are going to want to see the information come back out.
So, when working in these these levels, you can imagine that a classroom teacher would be living in level six and level five. Your building principal would be living in level four, level five. As district, as the exec team and district admin, we'd be living in level three and level four. And then, as a board, we would have the board living in level one and level two. And then, you can see parents, students, and staff, their dashboard data would be living in level four, five, and six. So, that's the graphical representation of how we see the data flowing from our strategic plan from to our students and our students back up into the strategic, back up into the strategic plan.
So, as we provide information to the community, it'll probably be your level one, two, and three data, probably more so level one and two, and that'll be the metrics. But we'd also like the practitioners to be and the students frankly, to be able to drill down and see the dials for their own data. And that's that's the ultimate goal.
Right. But just a reminder with student data privacy and confidentiality, with great power comes great responsibility. And so, the more information we have, the more responsibility we have to be great keepers of that. So, and we and we realize that.
So, let's just refresh how we got here. We had the strategic planning session, I think it was. Then, the leadership put together the detailed action planning, which you just saw. And then, as I said, we've worked with Julie, Kim, and Dave and myself kind of putting together, okay, how are we going to measure success on the on the overall plan? That's what you just saw. And how this all started was at within within the leadership team, we basically took each goal and and broke them into groups and said, okay, how would you measure success for this? That was the that was the first pass at it. Then, we typed up and organized the results, and then, we also looked at the the Baldridge winners and kind of cross-matched and said, are we missing any data or any data from other high-performance organizations? Then, we refined it, and that's what you are going to see to tonight. And so, I'm going to turn it over to Julie. You are, basically what we did was we stepped back and said, and made it kind of layman's terms of what questions are we are we trying to respond to? And what are the questions that the community are going to have or that you are going to have as a board member? And so, that's what you'll see as as Julie walks us through this.
So, this was our first look at, or actually, it wasn't our first look, this was several hours of of work in bringing together what what performance measures, what key metrics are going to live in level two? If you recall, you know, levels one, two, and three feed into the strategic plan. What measures are going to live in level two? What are going to be those high-level measures that are going to be indicators of we're making progress on the priority? And as you start to look over this, you're going to notice that the majority of this document is looking at priority one, because the most important thing we do in the Oshkosh area school district is improve student learning for all children. And so, how do we know that we're actually doing that? And so, we this is the brainstormed, boiled-down pieces of it. And we started looking at, what's the measure? Where would it where would it be on a balanced scorecard? What's the frequency that we update that data? Do we have it? Does it does it live somewhere within our within our systems? Do we, what's its status? And then, who actually who actually owns it? And so, as we were going through priority one, I was like, I own a lot of that data, I guess. So, but as you go, you can see that there's other members of the exec team of where that actually where that actually lives.
Before you go on, we are going to ask you at the end of this, what are we missing? What questions do you have that you think that we need to put in here?
So, as the exec team, we took the first pass of this. And if you look at down the left-hand side, you'll notice that some of the metric numbers in there numbered like priority one point three or priority one point four have a light green color coding and a dark green color coding. And so, what that was was is that if it's green, that means we thought as an executive team, we thought that was an important measure on a high-level, level-two dashboard. And if it's dark green, that means the the we were separated up into two groups, the two groups agreed, and we really felt like that that was a high-level measure.
You know, the other thing that's important is to understand the role of a dashboard. Think of your car dashboard. It doesn't have every single piece of data that your car is measuring every moment of it all the time. There's a whole bunch of data that you never get to see. But what you do see, things like fuel, with the temperature gauge, how fast you're going, those are real key key indicators. So, that's why we went through these and said, what are those gauges that we want to keep an eye on on an ongoing basis? And obviously, the other data's there, and we look at that other data, but not every day. So, that's that's just something.
So, let me give you an example of that. On your chart here, if you can go down the left-hand side and find priority one point one, it's under academic performance and it's under reading. And you can notice that P one point one is dark green, and so, that means that we thought that was a really high-level metric that we needed to work at. And if you notice, the question was, how many third graders are proficient readers? And so, we may be going, okay, wait a minute. Why is it just why is it just third graders? Why why that question? Well, we know that we want proficient readers at every single grade level, kindergarten one, two, three, all the way through twelfth grade. However, though, remember when we're talking about it being a dashboard, there's really key indicators. And on a dashboard, if we put up K through twelve, all thirteen grade levels, we're already, we've already cluttered up the dashboard right there. So, what's the key indicator for reading? We know that in research, that if a child is not proficient reader at the end of third grade, they're four times more likely not to graduate from high school. And so, that's a key indicator. Under math, it's if you're not proficient in math at the end of eighth grade, you're more likely not to graduate from high school. So, those are research-based like key indicators. So, if we drop down into level three, of course, we're going to have all the data disaggregated by subgroup of where all of our readers are. But when we're looking at it at high level, what are we going to monitor? What's that what's that barometer? We're going to be looking, we're suggesting that we look at the third-grade reading level. Does does that make sense?
It does a little, but I mean, by then, it sounds like it's too late.
But if you go down, if you dig down into level three, imagine what we're already doing in level three. In the level-three data, we're monitoring four K through the phonetics assessment for literacy, early literacy skills. We're monitoring in four K kindergarten, one, two, and now, we're getting to third grade. So, we, as a district, should have a very good idea before we ever hit third grade, what that's going to look like and be making adjustments along the way to do that.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But it's it's just kind of now, now we're going to look at how successful we've been up to that point.
Yeah, these by the higher you go up, well, I should say the lower you go up in the levels, levels one, two, and three, they're more summative. But that doesn't mean there isn't a lot of formative work occurring at the lowest levels by by the teachers, by the parents, by the students, by the administration. So, yeah, you you've picked up on something very key there. A lot of the dashboard metrics are going to be summative.
And they're going to be very high-level.
Very high-level.
So, the I believe we have a couple of questions that we want you to take a just take a few minutes right now to per to peruse over this. And if we flip in here, oh, we're not on the call point, yeah, on the call point anymore. There's two questions that we'd like to take a question out right now, and we would like your feedback or discuss a little bit. But question number one is, which of the key data indicators identified in green are most important to you as a board member? So, as you start to look at these and the green indicators, are the ones that really pop out to you that are saying, this is really key to me as a board member? And then, number two, are there key level-two data indicators that you would like to see in a priority area that are not identified? And so, what I hear John saying, Dr. Lindberg saying, is that perhaps there might be need to be another, maybe a little bit earlier reading and possibly an earlier reading indicator in there could possibly be a something for feedback.
Maybe not, but but you could bring red flags to us if you see something in their in their form, uh, formative data.
So, in level three?
Yeah. And and you need help with something, you know, the board would want to help, would want to know about it to help you.
And incidentally, inside the strategic plan right now, as one of the tasks, the subtasks is about getting, you know, we have some work we need to do as we roll out some of these tools so that that the teachers and the principals are also comfortable doing digging on their own, you know, because we don't want to, this is more higher-level stuff for us to put up as a dashboard. But we also want to be able to provide professional development with people and say, look, if you if you have some questions at the building level as a building learning team, here's how you dig in and find that data. Because the magic is the question. The data, we can always find to answer those questions.
And I think I think there's, I'm sure there is a little community pride here. We want those dashboard numbers to look good.
Oh, absolutely.
At the grade-three level. So, that's what I'm suggesting is that if you see something in the earlier, you know, show us the red flag so we can, when it gets put out there, we'd like to.
And the other thing is, is do we need to be allocating resources? Do we need to be looking at different strategies? Do we need to be? And and the board needs to be informed of that. Absolutely.
Absolutely.
So, how much time do you want to give them to do this?
I don't know, how much time, how much time would you like?
As in tonight or like?
Or 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 we can or we can come back. I mean, what are your what are your thought, what are your thoughts right now? Like, because we would like your feedback on.
Well, I mean, it's easy to see what's there, but it's not so easy to see what's not there. So, I don't know.
This, although we will have a pretty full first workshop session in August, but I think there is a level of thoughts of really a three-week period until, I believe it's August tenth, is our next regular board meeting, that that we could resume once you've had a chance to reflect and and to deal with it. And we could put that early on on that workshop agenda so that we can have a healthy conversation about, as John put, what's not there. Because we're very proud of what we have there, but seven-eight people working together does not make for a final list. And know the and Julie's description of both that third grade with literacy and eighth grade with math, we know, we know those are key indicators of where our twelfth-grade measures was successfully.
Can we at least commit as a board to get our feedback to Julie? Would you want to be the gatekeeper or Dave?
I can be the gatekeeper.
Walter, you want to do it?
These guys are doing great job.
Right on, right on. Julie, do you want to take? Okay.
Sure.
Can we? Before the August tenth, so that she can at least have a running start.
So, we can compile it, et cetera.
Would that be okay with everybody?
Would you would you be open to me sending, for example, you a a Google Doc and you could fill in your feedback right there?
That would be really nice.
And then, it's all compiled and we can each, then we can see what each had to say within it?
That'd be great.
So, we can collaborate.
Julie, our minds are just like one tonight.
Yes, yeah, great minds think alike. Great, John.
And then, if we can at least have that to her bef, the week before, how about we give ourselves a deadline of the Friday before our meeting on Wednesday? Is that okay? It's kind of a nice, we all understand that deadline, so we don't have to think too hard.
And so, do the do the two questions, do the two questions make sense? And I'll put the two questions on the document and then you can answer from there.
And then, even a third question, if there's anything that they've missed that we would like to see that isn't on here?
Yep. Yep, absolutely. So, we could put third, any any other.
What didn't we know?
Friday, August fifth, have it turned over by.
Didn't know you were going to get homework tonight.
There's always a test.
And then, and then, obviously, if you have, if you have any questions or you need things clarified, Dave, myself, or Kim are happy to answer your questions.
Okay, great.
So, going on to the next part.
So, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this because I I there's, at the August tenth, I want to have a first draft of this. If you're just starting to complete tasks, you're already seeing things being completed. But I, we have a spreadsheet set up from Dave's master data that will basically roll it up and give you at least the graphical of the level one, of just how we're doing in the, on, on the plan. And, you know, the key metrics will be just, what's percent completed by status? So how many are complete, how many are in progress, how many are not started? And then a percent by priority area. And, and so, and you can see that, this is a prototype of the graphs there. And then percent completed by goal. And then, so the next level down, and then we'll have each, each goal has init, or has a lead for each of those. And we'll, we'll kind of put the spotlight on those that are leading the teams. So if Julie has ten initiatives, we'll see how she's doing in terms of, that's what this, this graph is. Is basically, here's the person's name and here's how many initiatives they have and what are red, yellow, and green.
That'll be fun.
Purpose of that is?
Yeah, that'll be fun.
Healthy competition or what?
Healthy competition, yeah.
You guys okay?
Yeah, Dave, I'll raise you one initiative.
Do you guys agree with this? Was it your idea? If this leads to cheating, you guys.
Exactly. You'll also know, you'll also see who's got a lot on their plate by that end.
Okay.
And it will also indicate to us, you know, does somebody need more help? Do they need additional resources? So it's not meant to be, this, these data are not meant to be a stick. They're meant to be a, how can we help?
Feedback, okay.
Well, the other thing to remember is this is a three-year plan. So the, the urge people have when you create these is pack everything into year one. And we really have done a pretty good job with the completion dates of stretching it out to make it, make the pieces fit so we're not having so much overlap that we run into the problem of jeopardizing other progress. So in some cases, you may have an initiative that has zero percent completion because it's really not scheduled to start till next year. So that's.
And, and we also have to bear in mind that these aren't independent entities. They are some, they are all subservient to, interconnected, subservient to each other. It's not unlike John's earlier question about, well, we throw up our hands and say we didn't succeed with X number of students in third grade. Well, everything that happened in our working with parents in four K and first grade and second grade and third grade are all subservient one to another. And that the ownership of, of success doesn't just rest with what happened in third grade. It is ownership for all who contributed to the education of that child from four K on. And, and of course, with good, safe handoffs from parents.
The other piece is, we look at a lot of these priority areas and specifically priority five is based on community partnerships. And we know that partnerships, over time, need care and feeding and tending to. And so, and that takes time, effort, and support to, to do that. And so partnerships are very key in all of this.
Okay, so here's your consultant talking to you saying, here's your role. First and foremost, at any time you do metrics and the board's role is basically, if you do have plan, do, check, act. You guys are the plan and the check, right? That's your pri, primary role. Leadership is the do. And then you will help them adjust. So if they need more resources, then they will put together a plan for the act. So I, I highly recommend, keep that in mind. Don't, and that goes, feeds in the next one, don't get into the weeds, don't get into the do. If you've got an issue with, with things that are not being executed well, bring them up. But don't, don't micromanage and get into the, so stay at that high level. Stay at the priority area and at the goal level. All of that data that's underneath, you can go in and see that he's got a plan for, you know, the website and hiring and this and that. I would recommend you don't get into that level. And then review and understand the tactics, but don't manage them, okay? One of the big things that I see quite a bit, especially from boards, is if you bring up something in a meeting, if you have a question or this is not going well, or I don't, and you have an issue or something, just ask, ask them that they would, with a five-minute conversation or an email, just, just ask the, you can see who the priority area lead is and just say, hey, how we doing on this, or I heard something about this. Just go ask them and rather than having them, because the more resources that you pull out to go and do something formal at a board meeting, you're taking away from time from actually doing the, the real work, okay? And the other one is, I just want to reiterate this, is this is your plan. This is your community's plan and you've put, spent a lot of time and effort putting this together. Let these guys execute on this before you add additional work. So think twice about, well, hey, Stan, can you get a new report and do this? And, and oh, something, if a new shiny object comes up, it should be in the plan. Let them execute their plan first, okay? Because Dave started out, it's all about priorities and where resources are allocated. Right now, these guys are doing a really good job of, this is our plan, we're sticking to it. And if you want something else, then, then adjust the plan. And say, okay, we're going to move this one or move that out. But they're basically doing what they're supposed to be doing is they're allocating resources to the things that we, we said was important, okay? So that's my, my advice. Here's our next steps is, so we did the workshop tonight. We're going to finalize the progress on the reporting spreadsheet. So we have a template, we have a draft of those metrics that you saw. And we'll try to get a first draft of that by eight, ten. And then you can look at the whole, what, what that looks like from a high level. And then you, you'll always have an opportunity to add to that. Then like Dave had mentioned, the, we haven't yet, there's a lot of work and a lot of, any time you put together metrics, basically, you want to select your metrics, those things that you're going to graph, that you want to see over time. It takes a lot of time and energy to do that. And so we're going to start looking at a tool to be able to do that more effectively. You have basically, I think, seven different data sources. And you're going to need something to pull all that data together, present it in a graphical format. And so we're, we're starting the research on that. And, and then we'll, we'll try to have the first draft of the board's scorecard around October. And so those little green, those dark green ones, we're starting with those. So if you have some advice of, I want to see that question answered, then let us know. Because we wanted to pare it down and have just the key, key ones for the graphs. And then having the draft, board scorecard in place in the display tool sometime in January or first quarter of next year. So that's where we're at. Questions?
I just had a quick question. And first of all, this looks like a lot of work and it looks really good. So thank you so much for your hard work on this. In the status section, when it says have it, does that mean that we currently are tracking data? Or we know it's available or both?
Exactly. If, if it says have it, we, we know where it is. There's been a data assessment dictionary behind it. We have it like all mapped out and we know exactly where it lives. For example, if you go to P one-seven where it says it's in progress, we have that. But it may be living like within a spreadsheet and not necessarily in a, in one of our student information systems or in a, in a secure data bucket, if that makes sense.
So it might take some work to get it out?
Correct.
Potentially, yeah.
Yep. And those are things we're working on.
The other thing that we're doing that's really, you know, really our responsibility that we're working on is also making sure that the data that goes in there is valid and reliable. I mean, that's the other thing that you have to laser in on. Just because the data's there doesn't mean it's necessarily clean. So, so making sure that we do that through the eyes of, of the practitioner who's entering the data is important for us as well. So there's a lot that goes into that.
Any other questions?
I do, I have a comment. Again, great job, you guys. I, my comment is to reflect on what Walter was sharing with our board roles. I understand what you're saying, I agree with most of them. But I also want to make it very clear to the community that if the community comes to me, you know, I feel that I'm supposed to be doing what I'm supposed to be doing and I have to be accountable to the community. So if they're coming to me with questions, I will ask them here, I want transparency. So I think that's also important. So I don't want anybody here to feel that they're not to ask questions or we have to call me questions. I, I understand what you're saying, I get it as a board member. But I want the community who's watching that know that I will, and I'm, I'm sure everybody else on this board, we will be asking those questions if they want us to ask those questions, that they're coming to us, that, that transparency is important.
Oh, definitely. If you get a parent question of, you know, why we're doing this at this school.
I get a lot of them, so, yeah.
No, by all means, but.
I know that's not what you meant, but I just wanted to give my opinion that that's something that we will get.
That's part of the function up a board, right? Is taking those, those complaints and, and issues from parents and roles up to the, get good.
Absolutely.
Excellent point.
I think, I mean, we don't want to play gotcha. So, you know, if you have questions, it's, it's nice to let them know that you will be asking that question so they can kind of prepare a good answer, a complete answer, you know, rather than.
But having them here so that the transparency, that everybody can see the answers to them.
I mean, you know, you know, when I first got on the board, there was a couple of people that liked to play gotcha with, with administrators and that was not cool. So we don't want to do that.
And it makes for far better board meetings, but it makes for far better television articulate answers coming back because we've been prepared.
Okay, any other questions?
I would just like to say that my compliments, I know how many hours and how many days that Dave, Julie, Kim, and Walter have been working together to get us to this stage. It's an incredible amount of work. And as you can see by, this is just the, kind of the tip of the iceberg of what's all behind it. It's incredible to make this a responsive, responsible outcome that moves us forward. And my compliments to all of you for that excellent work.
Thank you.
Yes, they did a fantastic job. Not me, it's mostly them, so.
Thank you so much. Okay, and on to our last workshop. Nope, sorry, third workshop, nursing services. Matthew Kamer.
He's Kamerer.
What is it?
Kamerer?
Kamerer.
How do you say it, Matt?
Kamer.
Kamer, I'm just going to say Kamer.
Much easier than it looks.
Kamer, Kamer.
It is a lot easier.
It's got a silent E R on the end.
When you have those extra letters in there, it just complicates life, doesn't it?
It's like Lester is spelled Lychester. Pronounced Lester.
Consider changing the spelling a number of times, but. With me tonight are three of our four nurses. We have Katie Draxler, Kiri Tuma, and Liz Lynch. Stephanie Revoltz, our fourth nurse, was unable to be here, she had a prior commitment. So the purpose of us being here tonight is we wanted to update you on the current status of our nursing services and discuss adding an additional school nurse. So to start out, I wanted to give you an overview of our current staffing for school nurses. As I mentioned right now, we, we have four nurses in place that are responsible for thirty-four different sites. Now that includes our twenty-one schools, elementary, middle, and high schools, our second chance site. And then we have twelve early childhood sites that aren't attached to a current O S D facility. So along with our, our four nurses, we have fifteen full-time health assistants that serve a traditional health assistant role. And then we have three other health assistants that support students in a one-on-one role. So this would be students that have severe medical needs where they have a health assistant written into their I E P. So that number tends to fluctuate based on the number of students that we have in the district who need those services. So if you look at the, the overall numbers, the caseloads for our school nurses vary from one nurse to eighteen hundred students to one nurse to thirty-one hundred students. Now, to put that in perspective, the National Association for School Nurses recommends a nursing ratio of one to seven fifty. So as you can see, you know, we're quite, quite a ways from that. We're actually over twice the recommended ratio for our lowest nurse-to-student ratio. So our nurses serve a vital role in protecting our students, you know, ensuring their health and safety. And within that role, they have a number of responsibilities that include providing direct nursing care, providing emergency nursing services, supervising health assistants. Now I want to touch on that one for one second because that is a role that's unique to our nurses compared to other positions in the district. Any individual who our nurses delegate responsibilities to are essentially working under their license. So there's really a lot at stake for our nurses when they delegate responsibilities to health assistants. That supervisory role is so important. They also coordinate healthcare with outside providers. They attend care team meetings, I E P meetings, five oh four team meetings. They do health screenings, they review files of our, our four K students to identify any health conditions that may not have been reported to us. They do health counseling and education, Medicaid billing, billing. They monitor pediculosis or students who have head lice and many other things. So the next two slides lay out the role as compared to health assistants and then any unlicensed staff members who may be delegated responsibilities. So as you can see, there are some responsibilities that can be delegated to any staff member, including health assistants, which include basic first aid, administration of medication, reporting child abuse, crisis response. And then there are a few responsibilities that can only be delegated to health assistants, like assessment and management of trauma, doing general health assessments, and then our visions and hearing, vision and hearing screenings. And then this slide shows those responsibilities that are exclusively covered by our school nurses. So creating individual health plans, doing section five oh four evaluations and assessments, training individuals to give medication, maintaining student health records, requesting medical records from outside providers, providing health education, case management, referrals, follow-up with health, outside providers, healthcare counseling, and then reporting of communicable diseases. So we also wanted to lay out health trends in this district. Not only recent trends, but going back a little ways. So this graph shows some, some basic health trends for, for roughly the past fifteen years. So these are some of the more common chronic health conditions that our students have in the district. So as you can see, certain conditions like diabetic care, EpiPens for students with severe allergies and concussion management have increased significantly. And there's been more attention placed on asthma care as well. The next couple of slides provide an alternative visual for some of these, so diabetic care, severe allergies. And the concussion management is, is a relatively new one, not from the standpoint that students just started getting concussions, but there's a lot more emphasis placed on it now. And recently, there were some laws that went in place that mandated certain protocols that our nurses have to follow for any student who has a concussion. So that has increased the time that they have to dedicate to that impairment in particular. In addition to the increase in chronic health conditions, we've also seen a rise in the acuity of the health conditions. So acuity refers to the severity. It's basically impossible to measure the severity of health conditions in the district. But if you go off the observations of our nurses and the experiences that they've had, they're seeing a lot more significant conditions that require intense support for a lot of the students in the district. I don't know if, if you wanted to speak to that piece?
You did a really good job. I guess there are things that come to mind. Students that may have been cared for at home in the past are now coming to school. Sometimes when kids, we've had kids that have had brain surgery and show up for school and we didn't even know they were coming back. So things that weren't, that wouldn't, would have taken a lot longer of a time for them to come back. They're coming back, which is great to have them at school. It just means that our acuity is getting a lot higher and we're still at the same staff ratio. So it makes it a little bit more difficult, but.
So in addition to the rise in, in student health concerns, there have been a number of things that have been added to our nurses over the past several years. So the first one that, that stands out is when we created the early learning program, we added sixteen additional student sites, including over seven hundred students. And we adjusted accordingly for other positions in the district, but our nursing F T E remained status quo at that time. So I had previously mentioned the importance of our nurses reviewing files for incoming students to catch any health conditions that may not have been reported. And really, that takes up quite a bit of their time. And it's something that we want to make sure that they don't neglect. There's also been a significant rise in the number of students who have five oh four plans in the district. If you go back just five years, our number has almost tripled. And the main reason for that is O C R came out with some guidance a few years ago that requested that districts evaluate any student who has an individual health plan for a five oh four plan. So in the process of that, we gained a lot of students who were on five oh four plans. What that means for. What that means for our school nurses is that, that's another meeting that they have to attend every year because every student with a five oh four plan has an annual meeting. So, again, something else.
For the community, could you tell us what a five oh four plan is?
Oh, absolutely. So, a five oh four plan is, is through the Office of Civil Rights, and it's more or less an accommodation plan that students can have in place in a general education setting. So, for instance, if, if a student has a health condition like A D H D, for instance, there may be accommodations written in their plan like preferential seating or additional time to complete work. So, it's just basic accommodations to help level the playing field for a particular health condition. Good question.
Thank you.
In addition to the rise in five oh four plans, our, our nurses have been using Infinite Campus to manage their, their caseloads, which has had many benefits for them, but has also taken more time compared to the methods that they had used previously. There's also been an increase in the number of staff trainings they've been responsible for providing. So, anytime a student with a health impairment goes on a field trip, our nurses have to provide training for the teacher or staff member that's going to be supervising that student to make sure they're safe. The district also stocks epipens for students that have severe allergies, so any staff member working with, a student with a severe allergy has to be trained on how to administer an epipen. Every school in the district has an emergency team, and every year, our nurses provide trainings for our emergency teams. And then finally, anybody who distributes medication in the district must be trained by our nurses as well. One thing I wanted to emphasize is, is this isn't a new need. And I think there's been a need for additional nursing support for some time in the district, and in the past, we've gotten creative with some of the ways we help compensate for some of, of the time constraints that our nurses experienced. So, one of the things we did is we allowed our nurses to only attend I, five oh four meetings or I E P meetings, particularly for students that have a, other health impairment label, when there was a medical concern. So, any concern that was related more to mental health, we shifted that responsibility on to our school psychologist. So, that helped, but now with the increase in five oh four plans, I fear that that may have canceled out what we did here. In the past, we considered adding a health assistant instead of a nurse. It's a little bit cheaper to add a health assistant, but as you can see, the responsibilities that a, a health assistant can manage are far less than a school nurse. In addition to that, there becomes a point when adding health assistants could actually be kind of productive in that. It's just another person that our nurses have to supervise. We considered reducing to health assistants to add a nurse to be cost neutral. The only problem with that is that leaves a gap in coverage that could have some significant consequences. And finally, we looked into adding a more efficient healthcare data, data management system. This is still a possibility down the road, but right now, there's a lot at the state and federal level going on with student data privacy laws. And the fear is that if we made a change now, something could now come down the pipe that could, could cause us to reverse course, the data system that we choose. So, again, we put the brakes on this for now, but it's something we're gonna take another look at. That's it for us. Do you have any questions, or is there anything that you wanted to add to the nursing staff?
I have questions.
Barb?
What did you use prior to Infinite Campus to manage caseloads? You said since the advent of Infinite Campus, it's been more time consuming. Was it time consuming under the old system, or, or what was the method that was used prior to that?
Yeah, I, I didn't use it very much because this is only my third year, but it was just a different system for the entire school district. You know, they used a different program, they went to a different, which the whole purpose is for student learning. So, that's its main objective, that's what it works really well for.
Sure.
But then healthcare is kind of, it's just a separate entity, so it has some stuff built in, and we're still working with Infinite Campus to learn how we can better use it because there is a lot of great stuff in it, we just don't have it all built in yet. So, that's just a learning curve as well, but if there is a more efficient way to do it somewhere else, or just by learning more with them, we just need more help with that. So, at this point in time, it's just, takes a lot longer than it used to.
Correct me if I'm wrong, too, I'm sorry, Liz, but a lot of it was done paper and pencil too, from what I understand.
Yep.
Place some binders, you know, it's much more secure this way.
And from my understanding, in the past, when we used the other program, Skyward, it was a bit easier to pull the data that we need. We don't have the reports set up because it's not necessarily the healthcare, you know, it's not a healthcare data system, so it's a little bit more tedious for us to get the information that would, that would benefit us. It's, it's not timely, it's not quick, so it takes a little bit to understand how to run the reports and then get them, get the information we need.
But if you had a system that was quick and snappy, you're still gonna need another nurse?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
We just have.
So, if I had a magic wand and I fixed your check problem. So, even with, your, your only request at this time is for one additional R N.
Correct.
That was my question, why one?
Why just one, yeah, why not?
Well, okay, and then let's talk about the costs.
We, I kind of talked about this because I thought a lot about why just one nurse because we all know we could probably use, like, at least four.
Let's, let's just ask this first to start, to start with, to kind of give us a context. If we were following your, your professional society recommendations, how many nurses should this district have?
Like thirteen.
Thirteen, and we have four.
Four.
Okay, so, you guys are doing an amazing job, and it must be tremendously stressful to try and cover all that. Okay, so now we've got to target thirteen.
Yep.
Now go.
Well, I thought a lot about this because Carrie and I both started this year. So, school nursing is a completely different nursing role than anything that any of us have done. We've had experience in the hospitals, in the P Q, in nursing homes, in clinics, triage, phone triage nursing, all of this experience that we've had, nothing's at, at all like school nursing. So, with Carrie and I starting this year, it put a lot of pressure, I think, on Katie, who was just in her second year, and then Steph, thank goodness, who is in her eighth year, because we were constantly asking questions, how does this happen? So, in an ideal world, we would ask for a lot more nurses, but the stress that it would end up causing on the current nurses we have would end up, I think, affecting the students' healthcare because we wouldn't.
Too many at once to try to redo it.
Less time to dedicate to them, so while we know the need is there.
So, you would like to grow, but go slowly?
Yeah.
Yeah.
In phases.
Okay.
And for the benefit of the public, and what our nurses are facing is, is also a reflection on the changing demographics of our community. Increased level of poverty with greater family needs, more and more the arrival of, of children coming to school that, that they are not getting to the regular medical attention coverage that's available in, in middle-class and upper-class homes. And, and the other issue, and it was described so well, is while we get surprised where a child gets out of having some kind of major surgery and they're just arriving at our doorstep because, because of cost containment in hospitals, children don't stay in convalescent settings very long, very long, they're moving on faster. And bearing in mind that the long-term blessing of what is all happening in medical science with saving more and more babies, we have more and more babies who are then maturing to be four cares and first kindergarten, first, second graders that have been saved medically, but they remain medically fragile into their school years. And that is an issue that is, is not commonly understood, but the, the blessing of what, how many, how many, both prenatal issues as well as postnatal issues, how many changes have occurred and improvements have occurred. But remember that children coming with major needs at birth do not escape unscathed into their school year age, and our nurses are dealing with that along with our teachers in both learning as well as the medical fragile conditions. I am just amazed and, and, and very proud and pleased of what our nursing services do and, and their support staff with what I observe across the district with some of the most incredibly medically fragile children and helping them be healthy enough to be successful students in school. It is just plainly amazing, but that reality of how our society has blessed us in one case, that increase of success with, at birth and, and prenatally, but at the same time, remember that the issues that made them fragile begin with and help them survive or remain with us, not just through elementary, but I look at the number of students that we're dealing with in middle school and high school level that are extremely medically fragile, and our staff are handling that. And, and the nurse's job ends up being, keeping them healthy enough to be successful in our classrooms, and that's really critical.
So, do we have the resources? Are you asking for us to go above budget? This does not fit into our budget.
No, it wasn't budgeted for, for next year, so we would have to be creative with how we pay for it.
Okay.
In our facility finance, Sue and, and Matt were going together.
Okay.
And looking for funds and looking where to come up with it, and it was with benefits, sixty-two thousand, you had asked that before.
Okay.
For the annual. Sorry.
Thanks. Okay, are there any other questions?
Just out of curiosity, where are the four of you based out of now?
They each have.
Their car.
They're all over.
So, there's no longer like a, like a school nurse at North High anymore?
Well, we each, each four R N B S N, we each have an, an office somewhere, but really, our office is like our Chromebook and everything is digital because we run around, but then there are also health offices. Some of the schools have dedicated health assistants.
Liz, can you tell us how each, how many of you each have locations? Because they allocate them per nurse, how many?
Like, I, I have an office at Trager Middle, but then I have five school sites and two other four K sites, so I have seven, but you guys.
I have eight sites. I'm at North a, a good part of the time, but then I have seven other sites that I. And I have eleven. I have South Park Middle School, and then five elementaries, and then the four four K sites and second chance.
And Stephanie?
She does the rest.
So, we use her fingers.
We could count, actually.
Just seven with her four K sites.
And she must be at West then?
She's at West.
Wow.
So, on a typical day, do you go to each site, or do you just case by case, or how does it work?
Yeah, it really depends. Kind of start at one school, or you kind of go by based on where you're having your care team meetings for the day, so you kind of spread out your week that way. So, Mondays I would start at South Park because that's where I had care team to try to be efficient, so start there. And then some days I would stay there the whole day because my, everything was covered at the other schools. Then you get a call that there's a situation, you go over and help out at that school. You have a meeting somewhere else in the afternoon, you go there and checking with your health assistant. Many of my buildings don't have a health assistant, so then they call me more of like a triage, hey, this is going on, should I call home? So, that's where I have to rely on my secretaries and my teachers and things like that. So, as we were talking earlier, that's a source of anxiety because I don't have a health staff at every building, not everybody does. So, that is kind of a, a difficulty for me, so.
When my father taught art, in those classes that have a lot of equipment that are being used, he would have a real nervous fit about teaching a kid how to use a, a metal chopper without a nurse on site. Because he had a student that had his, had her finger.
Yeah, but my daughter sliced, she was doing that copper thing in art and sliced her finger.
Yeah.
So, the, the great news is that we do that training on the medical teams. So, if, if there isn't a health assistant in the, in the building, or if there isn't a, a school nurse in the building, we've trained those health teams, and the, the staff that aren't on the health team would know to.
Who is, will get some.
Call the office and say medical team emergency, or whatever they're gonna say in a, in an emergency. They'll, they'll make that call, and the staff that we've trained will get there and they'll know what to do. They'll, they'll look at it and they have their assigned roles of what they could do. So, we do have those things covered, but I'm in agreement that it'd be really nice to, to have one of us at all of the schools. Not really an option, but ideal world.
It came up in the facilities and finance meeting that sometimes you are actually at all of your schools on a given day. And it struck me then, as I, and as I reflect on it tonight too, obviously, when you're in your vehicles traveling, you're not.
Waste.
Be able to provide direct service during that time period to students. And some of our schools are quite far apart, particularly if you have a north side school and then you have something on the other side of the river, and at this time of year with bridges opening and, of course, trains always going through, that can be a variable in terms of how much additional time you're spending in your vehicles. So, that's, that's a concern too to me that you're trying to do your jobs, but you're having to move, and that adds to the time away from children.
So, what's the next step? Will this be coming to the board in the form of a?
Yes.
Okay. All right, great. All right, are there any other questions? All right, well, thank you for all of the wonderful things that you do. I'm sorry, there's not more of you.
Thank you.
Okay, and now it really is our last workshop, alternative E B D programming.
So, in the strategic plan, you saw, um, community partnerships is really important for us. I have the pleasure of sitting at the table with Lori Fields, who's the director at the Boys and Girls Club of Ashkosh, Beth Culp, who has a new job title at Winnebago County. What's your job title?
Long-term support division manager.
So, she's now her own old job supervisor, and then Joaquin Lyra, who is with juvenile justice. We kind of all have been talking about putting our heads together. Right now, we send our students, as you see in the report, to Elmwood Alternative School. The annual cost for students that we send there is roughly twenty-seven thousand. We started collaborating or working together with children who were suspended and putting our heads together, saying, well, their question to me was, Linda, why aren't these kids in your school district? And so, the new bookkeeper, who unfortunately could not be here tonight, did some cost analysis for us, and as you can see by the numbers, there would be a cost savings. What's really exciting about this program is that all these agencies or these people who are here are very much in support of it, and they can answer questions, and we have secured space to rent at the Boys and Girls Club. So, for us, it's gonna be really nice to have those children in our district, and not only that, some of them attend the Boys and Girls Club after school. So, I don't know if there are specific questions. I tried to put everything in the report, but Joaquin, or if you have anything to add, he's been begging me to start a program as a potential revenue source for Ashkosh for a long time because I think he knows I would manage it or provide opportunities for our kids not to have to ride on the bus for ninety minutes.
I've been working with Linda, she's a kid in the district, and we've started communicating about the different roles that we have in the county and the services because we had the same kids in common. And I just pulled some numbers from last year. Last year, kids under the age of ten, we had a hundred and thirty-seven charged in the districts that I deal with. And I know all the districts in Winnebago County, but the three major districts were the producers of those a hundred and thirty-seven. You know, kids under the age, under the age of ten were charged with some offense, and those are all at schools, you know? So, the school, the Ashkosh District is the biggest school district which pulls some of those kids. Now, now, all of, all of those kids will not be going into this program, but those are good indicators because kids were having a lot of issues, and we don't believe that those kids would be in this system. They're not delinquents, there's not the right system for them. We try to provide services, but because of the speed in which their activities take place, that's where they end up. They're acting out of school, the school doesn't have the personnel, the resources to deal with those kids. Police get called, they get charged. And we can only prevent that from entering into the system for so long before, you know, they become active delinquents because if they're six, seven, eight referrals, because I'll have a, a nine-year-old who's been charged fourteen times, you know, because of acts. So, eventually, the system just really swallows them, you know, and it becomes a well behavioral control, and not so much services. So, this is really a prevention in a, in a way of identifying these kids and assisting them so they can be productive members in the community and not a cost to the community down the line because that's what happens when they, you know, when we fail in that sense. So, this to me is a really good way of partnering and working together. It's, it's the same kids, you know, so there's no silver bullet and there's no fast, efficient way of dealing with this. The services that we provide are long-term, and we just need a system that's able to handle those kids for their time. The current system is not working, you know? So, this is a good plan for us.
Okay.
The schools that we deal with outside of here, even these schools that we send the kids to are calling my office constantly and referring charges because they can't handle the kid, you know? And I had good experiences with other programs that Linda is familiar with.
Yeah, we, um, we work really closely together, so Beth. Yeah, we, we work really closely together. So Beth, I don't know if you can add, Beth was giving me some numbers of what she spent, what she spends on Oshkosh area school district students, not just special ed, but also regular ed that are suspended. Because very often, Beth's agency will get a call and they will need care during the school days, so the parents aren't losing their jobs when we're suspending. So, I think you had a figure, I don't know if it's on the tip of your tongue, but.
Yeah, I can give some information on that. I agree with what Joaquin said, that these are not juvenile delinquents, but they are kids with significant behaviors that make it very hard to educate them in a typical classroom, or even some of the adapted classrooms. My hope by going into this endeavor is that we will have better outcomes for the children and families, because right now, whether they're not in school at all, or in school partial days and getting suspended or referred on, they're, they're really not getting the educational support that they need. And if we have to send them to places like Elmwood or anywhere outside the district, it's a lot harder to transition them. The parents can't be involved, other community services can't be as involved. It's costly, as Linda has described in the report, but I really believe that the outcomes aren't as good, and it's a lot harder to get them transitioned back to their home school, which is really the ultimate goal. With regards to our county being involved, we don't wanna get into the vicious cycle of a parent, a child being suspended or having to be in school for only part of the time, parents working. If the parent can't work and sustain employment, now we're looking at a whole nother set of socioeconomic problems that arise because of the child's behaviors. So, if the child has significant enough disabilities, there are times that our long-term support will, will have to staff that, basically, with someone. So there is a cost to the taxpayers and to our county by having to support those children so that the parents can work. And it's a couple thousand dollars a month that we're looking at in supporting those children. And that's not in an educational setting, so I wanna stress that. It's, it's, we're, we're supporting those children so that the parent can work, but they're also losing their education. So I really admire the collaborative efforts here so that these children can be educated, which is first and foremost.
And Lori has the pleasure of working with some of our spirited youth at the Boys and Girls Club. She has been great, along with Mark at the Boys and Girls Club, welcoming us to a space and providing us with space there. I don't know if you have anything to add?
Yeah, I think that when Linda came to us and was talking about it, the thing that really stuck with us, me and Mark, was when she said, we wanna get these kids back into their home schools. And if that's the ultimate goal, because I can't imagine when these kids, because they're coming, some of them are coming to us after school, some of them can't come to us 'cause they're not behaviorally ready to come after school, and we've worked through all of our processes. But the idea of being able to give them the skill set so they can go back to their schools is really important to us, 'cause we're seeing, these kids are elementary school kids, so they have a long way to go in the school curriculum yet. And, and a lot of times, it's setting up those support systems in the community. And because they're going, they're not in this community for a majority part of the day, it cuts off some of those services that I think we can get to these kids so that we can get them back to their home schools and, and hopefully, you know, graduate them at their, their regular grade level. So, and we're, we're set up for it. We have a buzz-in system at the Boys and Girls Club, just like the schools do for people to come in and out. We have, we have security cameras in our facilities to, to monitor things that are going on. We have a gymnasium, we have an art room, we have a computer lab that's, you know, has computers, we have a kitchen. So we're, we're kinda set up like a school setting already. And we have, you know, we head start uses our facility for part of the day, but, you know, we can definitely work out with this program and, and, and work with these teachers to get these kids into Boys and Girls Club program and community programming and success.
The other piece that I would add, if Deb Bandicoke was here, she would nudge me on the revenue point. Joaquin and Beth both have people call them all the time, asking why Oshkosh doesn't start something, or the trust. And Joaquin's like, Linda, as soon as you start this, they will be lining up. So we're doing a cost per pupil. We wanna make sure we have the program up and running, but there are some other alternative sites who are continually suspending children, and Joaquin's always looking for a place. So if we have space, we would never want more than twelve, but we are willing to do a sixty-six oh three and charge tuition. We figured out with about six kids, our cost to run it, if we had the teacher and one point seven staff, it would be roughly twenty-two thousand dollars. And so she's doing a cost per pupil and working with Sue's office or with Kelly as well.
So the tuition would be out of service area, not ours?
It would, other districts, say if Nina, or Amro, Winnicottany. We have some already calling us to share transportation for Elmwood. And if I don't send children there, which I don't anticipate I will, you know, it's a hardship for them to pay twenty-nine thousand for one student to be transported.
Right now, they're driving the district for a half hour, or forty minutes to get to these schools. A lot of times, these kids' behavior.
I was gonna say, you don't wanna put them on a bus. Even good kids on a bus are not, right?
Lots of spirit in there.
Another thing I wanna further emphasize is that, when listening to the portion of the strategic plan earlier this evening, and the part about partnerships and collaboration with community partners, again, I wanna emphasize that it's hard to do that when they're in Fond du Lac or Winchester or somewhere else versus a parent that can come across town or come during their lunch hour. As a parent with a child in the school district, it's so easy for me to just be there when needed, in whatever way. And they can't really, parents, most parents can't do that when they're outside the area like that. So I think this is another way to build those partnerships that the district wants to endorse.
And I wanna compliment that partnership, because indirectly or, you know, informally, we've been working with Linda and with Matt, actually, for a few years now, and with the district attorney and the schools and police departments. They're trying to address some of these kids in a different way and not necessarily the system that they're been used to. So, it's been a really good collaboration, you know, maybe because we all understand that the same, we have the same goals in mind. And now, communication's been great, so it has improved across schools.
We're, we're really grateful for the relationship that we've been able to cultivate between the county and the schools. It was very fractured, I would say, when I first came in, and we call each other, many of us, a lot. You know, when we have issues, Joaquin or even Christian Gassid have called on the phone when they have an issue with a student, and they're like, hey, Linda, you have to run interference with this and go to the school. So we, we're, it's been really healthy for us.
That can't, I'm sorry, Stan. I can't, that is probably one of, I don't know, I get emotional. That's so, makes me so happy, that, that was broken for a long time, and I know that. And to know that so many, everybody in the community cares, and they're finally on the same page, and they can discuss, down to one student, what's good for that one student, and everybody works together, like.
It's exactly the way it works.
Yeah.
Sometimes we'll have fun people in the room talking about particular students.
And, and the extension of services in relating with not just the students, but we all know that the center part is, is the relationship with the family. And, and I know all of, all of our representatives here tonight, and with Matt and Linda's, they work extensively with family and building relationships and building what they can with the partnership with parents, to make a difference. But my, my, I echo the compliments that they've shared with Matt and Linda, who have built outstanding relationships with our human services and court services personnel to make it work in the community. And then, of course, we have many partnerships with, with the Boys and Girls Club, and we feel that those extended services of the Boys and Girls Club have been very beneficial, because we're all serving, in many cases, the same clients. So, compliments to all involved. But Linda and Matt, in each of their roles, have reached out to our, our partners in Winnebago County and creating a wonderful partnership. And I know that Joaquin had been, was actively involved in, before Linda's arrival and in working in partnership with the school district. But I think it's been strengthened greatly by the, Matt and Linda working together with, and reaching out the other way. And when you add the county attorney, the county attorney or city, county attorney to this, you, you have a lot of dynamic forces that are there that also benefit law enforcement, but number one, help children learn.
Any other questions?
Yes, Barb.
Could you elaborate on the one point five paraprofessional? And, and would that be the number you would need for up to twelve students? Or would that be a smaller number?
Well, that, we know for sure that we need a teacher and a paraprofessional, Barb. There is a student, and without discussing names, that we know needs a little more individual support. So that's kinda up in the air. I will do it with the minimum amount of staffing as necessary. The point seven saves us, because it's not a full para with insurance benefits. And the only thing that would hold this whole process up is us not finding the perfect teacher. Because, as you all know, these spirited children that did not survive in our school, we feel very passionate that we're gonna have a cross-committee. When we look to recruit someone for this position, we know it has to be the absolute right person to keep us safe at the Boys and Girls Club and maintain, you know, that healthy relationship, so.
When would you anticipate this program beginning?
Day one of school.
Okay, so that brings me to my second question. Your staff report says that the board motion would be needed at the board meeting on August twenty-fourth, which is only one week before the start of the school year, well, a few days, actually. So, does the board need to vote on this at the meeting on the tenth? I know we typically don't do resolutions on the first meeting of the month, but would that expedite this process?
Yes, I think that that would be absolutely fantastic.
Good question, Barb.
It was one of the, that, and we may have some other issues. For example, we'll also have some last-minute hiring and other things that we would want to accomplish in that. These summer, these summer meetings, we do, do need to get people under contract, and we need to get programs in motion. So I was going to be asking our board president, vice president, to indulge us with that additional action items on that meeting.
Yes, thank you, Barb.
You're welcome. Thank you for all of your work.
Thank you so much. These patient community members waiting for the last workshop?
We apologize for the length.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, no individually considered resolutions, so request for future agenda items. Yes, Barb?
I would like to see two, in keeping with the strategic plan goal related to communication. One would be on, an update on the spending on the security that would be implemented as a result of the April twenty sixteen referendum. And also an update on the technology rollout for middle school, which is also related to referendum dollars. I don't necessarily have a preference as to a written report or a presentation. I think administration can perhaps decide what is best. But I think it's important that we know what's going on, so the communication is with the board as well as with the community.
Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other future agenda items? All right, any announcements? All right. Let's adjourn. Can we please adjourn? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. Please call the rule.
Charlie?
Aye.
Elias? Evans?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Aye.
Alstead?
Aye.
Okay. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.